Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council on today, March 10th. And we will start our work session agenda with first item, the budget. So the city manager will introduce the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget and begin the budget review. Ms. Vercheck, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, members of council. Today I present to you the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and the fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 2025 capital improvement program overview. All funds proposed for the operating budget and the capital improvement program total $370 million, which is a decrease of about $46 million or 11% less than FY 2020. This is primarily due to reduced federal and state funding for capital projects and the bond funding that was included in FY 2020. These funds are offset by a significant investment in the city's human capital, or our employees. This budget proposal was built on the following priorities as presented to you at your work session on February 11th. They generally comply with the city council adopted financial management policies. We are implementing Phase 2 of the citywide salary study. We are proposing a general wage increase for employees who meet or exceed performance expectations. It funds contractual and maintenance commitments. It addresses funding associated with the reengineering of the city's trash, bulk, and brush collection programs. It addresses increasing health insurance costs. It maintains training and professional development, at least flat with fiscal year 2020, and it avoids a tax increase. The Lynchburg Plan is incorporated into this budget, which includes the priorities that you endorsed back in February of this year. And those priorities include the city's growing and redeveloping economy, exceptional neighborhoods and strong families, a resilient, agile, and innovative organization, and a focus on strong public schools that meet the needs of our children now and in the future. The organizational structure is comprised of the four collaboratives as proposed, as communicated to you during last fiscal year. And the collaboratives are the Collaborative for Building Human Capital, the Collaborative for Livable Lynchburg, the Organizational Support Collaborative, and the Collaborative for Resiliency. And each of these collaboratives work together to help achieve the priorities and goals in the Lynchburg Plan. Regarding budget development, the citizen engagement tool that we use this year was really the National Citizen Survey that was presented, the results were presented to you in January, where 133 items for which comparisons were available, 115 items were rated similarly in 2017 and 2019. Nine items showed a decrease in ratings and nine showed an increase in ratings. In talking with this budget, in talking about this budget with some of you, this budget has been labeled two ways. One, it has been labeled as a maintenance budget, and it's been labeled as well as a meat and potatoes budget. I would agree with both of those. I've labeled it as just a plain vanilla budget. This year, as we did last year, we are making the Balancing Act web-based program available to citizens starting tomorrow, where they can go to our website and they can provide feedback on this proposal and balance the budget as they see fit. Once we get those results, we will report those back to you prior to your final adoption of the budget.
Ms. Vercheck?
Yes.
How would citizens get to that?
They can go to LynchburgVA.gov, and there will be a link there. Thank you. This year, departments were directed to submit a budget with non-personnel expenditures equal to or less than funds appropriated in fiscal year 2020. They were also asked to submit separately any items that were necessary for operations in 2021 but did not fit within the baseline instructions. Each department director will talk with you about those items, along with the consequences of those, the consequences of those items not being recommended for funding due to a lack of resources. Lynchburg City Schools was requested to submit a budget equal to or less than the amended fiscal year 2020 budget as well. This proposed budget maintains current services with no tax increase for services in the general fund. However, an increase in fees for trash collection is proposed. The school's operating expenditure request of $42 million is proposed to be reduced by $1.5 million due to declining average daily membership, increased state revenues, increased revenues from the state, and a trend of increasing year-end fund balance. The superintendent will be here on March 24th to present the city school's budget to you. Total general fund revenues for fiscal year 21, or 2021, are projected to be $194.1 million, an increase of approximately $3.4 million over the current year budget. The general fund operating budget, including schools, is proposed to be funded with ongoing revenues, except for $320,000 for the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company. Total proposed expenditures, reserves, and transfers are $200.5 million, or an increase of 5.9 million, or 3% over the current year. The majority of this increase is for rising health insurance costs, Phase 2 implementation of the citywide salary study, a proposed 3% general wage increase, and an increase in Virginia retirement system costs. This next little section is going to be highlights of major items proposed for funding in fiscal year 2021, generally beyond the baseline request of departments. In the council manager offices, we have included funding for an increase in city council member salaries based on your action of December 10th, 2019. In Parks and Recreation, staffing is included for College Hill Neighborhood Center and for new furniture and equipment for the Yoder and Fairview Community Centers. In Public Works, a education and enforcement officer for refuse collection is proposed, a piece of equipment, a mini sweeper for downtown is proposed, and an increase of $100,000 in the city's recycling contract to ensure that we can continue to support our six recycling centers. In the Fire Department, increased certification pay for paramedics and intermediate paramedics assigned to a medic unit is included, as well as a part-time professional standards and compliance manager. In the Police Department, funding is included for Microsoft Office software upgrade, scheduling and payroll software maintenance fees, vehicle equipment and maintenance due to transition from the Ford interceptors to SUVs, vaults for our rifles, computer operations training, beginning the phase-in of an aftershock siren system on fiscal year 2021 replacement vehicles, and preemption traffic signal equipment for unmarked vehicles. I've mentioned the use of $320,000 in funds for the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company operations. This is the one area where we are not being compliant with our financial policies. The staff and the board of GLTC totally understand that this is not sustainable, to use funding from their fund balance reserve for operations, but time is needed to figure out how to adjust the system that frankly, and no pun intended, we just can't turn around on a dime. So $320,000 is asked to be used of their $1.8 million fund balance. Of the $1.5 million recommended reduction in, for Lynchburg City Schools from the city, a half a million dollars of that is proposed to be put into the reserve for the Task Force on Education, pre-K through 12 and beyond. You might recall that when you considered the return of fund balance for Lynchburg City Schools, that we put $1.2 million in that reserve. If we add this half a million, that reserve would come to $1.7 million. I've already spoken about the implementation of the citywide salary study, Phase 2, 3% general wage adjustment. In addition, in the non-departmental section of this budget, I've included and have proposed $125,000 for funding to implement the recommendations of the Internal Safety and Security Task Force. This was a task force that I created and is led by Police Chief Ryan Zudima. I created it following the tragedy in Virginia Beach to do an inventory and make recommendations for how we can make our buildings more secure than they currently are. There is also $280,000 included in this budget due to increased payments to the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority. There were several items that were requested and merit funding, however, resources simply just were not available. These items include an enhancement to the Lynchburg Alert System in the Department of Communications and Public Engagement. This would allow mobile phone numbers to be part of that emergency contact system. And although needed, no funding was not available to hire a full-time digital engagement specialist. In the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney, a part-time investigator, salary and benefits only is not funded, nor is part-time, conversion of a part-time receptionist to a full-time legal support receptionist. In the Fire Department, nine full-time firefighter, emergency medical, technical positions to place a sixth medic unit in service are not included in the funding base before you. Six positions are requested to staff the unit, and three positions are to provide for a relief factor. Funding is also not included to start a reserve for self-contained breathing apparatus, which we need to be, which will need to be replaced department-wide in the next few years. I'm certain that the fire chief will talk a little more about that when he makes his presentation. A salary supplement for General District Court clerks was requested and not proposed. A couple of things in the Department of Human Resources were requested and not recommended, including software for an onboarding program for new employees, the printing of employee procedures and policy manuals, and additional clerical and intern support. In Parks and Recreation, costs associated with special events such as movies in the park and the annual, not so much annual anymore, celebration of lights in Riverside Park is not funded. Not funded in the Police Department are replacement honor guard uniforms and supplies, off-site backup for all server information, recruiting billboards, five sworn officers, and the associated uniforms, equipment, and three fully outfitted vehicles. In the Schools, in the Schools Division, full-time administrative support, behavior coaches, behavior coaches, and support staff needed at each school to implement school-based alternatives to suspension programs is not funded. Additional school counselors to reach one counselor for every 250 students in elementary, middle, and high schools is not funded. And additional facilities and licensed, and additional facilities and additional licensed mental health providers to support and support staff needed to expand alternative programs is not funded. We've talked about the personnel highlights, 3% general wage increase, implementation of Phase 2. We've included the incorporation of the $792 in medical premiums per member that began in January of this calendar year, and the increase in VRS costs. Back in December, city council may recall that you discussed and debated moving, changing your financial policy for fund balance from 10% of general fund revenues to work towards 15% of general fund revenues. We heard you loud and clearly, and we are slowly moving the needle towards that 15%. The proposed budget provides for a 10.9% fund balance, or in addition to the unassigned fund balance of a little over $1 million over the current year. Capital Improvement Plan, since fiscal year 2021, the city has applied a portion of the undesignated fund balance above the 10% of general fund revenues to pay-as-you-go capital construction for smaller projects, and frankly, projects that cannot be bond funded. The proposed capital improvement program continues this practice. In FY 2021, the pay-as-you-go funding from undesignated fund balance is $4 million compared with $2.3 million in the current year. In the Airport Fund, total expenditures of $2.8 million are proposed. This will be the sixth year of the airport operating with a surplus, which is projected to be $162,300. In the Water Resources, yes, in the Water Fund, no rate or service charge is proposed. There are decreased sales from non-contract customers. The Water Fund recognizes the end of IRS interest subsidy payments and decreased debt service payments of $300,000. The Sewer Fund proposes a 2% increase in the sewer volume rate, which equates to about 84 cents per month per household. Also in the Sewer Fund, there is a revenue reduction associated with the one-time payment from the Campbell County Utility Services Authority, and an increase in operational expenses, debt service, and a decrease in capital of $500,000. In the Stormwater Fund, there is no change in the monthly stormwater management fee. All three of these funds comply with city council's policies. The Stormwater Fund maintains compliance with the city's municipal separate storm sewer system permit, also known as MS4. A $500,000 capital investment program is proposed, as is what, an environmental compliance inspector funded with stormwater funds. Looking ahead and some outstanding issues, we are still sorting through the impact of the decisions that the General Assembly is making, focusing on impact to schools and social services particularly. Not yet, but in the future, the recommendations from the Task Force on the Future of Education will likely have a major impact on future operating budgets and capital improvement program budgets for the schools. As you work through this budget, you will need to consider an ordinance approving the new funding structure for the refuse collection system. Continued implementation of the citywide salary study, coupled with annual general wage increases, will continue to require significant funding for the city to retain and recruit excellent employees in every discipline of public service. Funding for a public transit system that meets the needs of citizens, needs additional funding and analysis. And we will need to continue our investment in maintaining and replacing the city's infrastructure, as well as a concern regarding ongoing facility maintenance. Moving forward, revenue projections will be updated April 1st. Council is scheduled to meet every Tuesday in March and April to review and deliberate over this proposal. The budget public hearing, including comments on the proposed increases to refuse collection, is scheduled for 7:00 PM on March 31st. Your practice has been to not have a work session on the same day that you have a public hearing, so for now, that stands. Following the budget public hearing, there will be a public hearing that same evening on the proposed sewer rate increase. Today, we will begin to walk you through each department's proposed budget. This year, I have asked department heads to present their budget to you as they know their department and its needs best, and will be able to best answer your questions. Today, we will also start the list of items you may want to revisit as you deliberate. That concludes my presentation of the proposed budget, and we can start walking through the budget, which begins with the council manager budget on page 104.
Thank you, Ms. Vercheck. Does anyone have any questions of the budget message?
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Para.
Maybe I missed something. If I did, I'm going to apologize in advance. But when we're going through the revenues, revenues, total general non-dedicated and dedicated revenues are 194.1 million, correct? Total expenditures are 200.5 million.
The difference is transfers to capital.
So we're still, you did give us a balanced budget.
Yes, of course. Yes, yes, of course. We use some reserve money to help fund capital.
Okay. And the GLTC difference didn't make up for that. So there's approximately 6.5 million, or 6.4 million in transfers to capital. 9.194.
Five. Pay-as-you-go in 2021 is...
That's 5 million and change.
Four million. Oh, from the, from the undesignated fund balance, it's 4 million, but then we also added funding from reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it. 6 million, 5.9.
Because we also use a little bit of reserves that we set aside. We're trying to go pay the old solid.
Waste debt off. So we, we use that every year to pay that debt service that's still on the landfill. So that's a little bit of it, so.
And you said the work and safety policies. So there are no proposed, except for GLTC, we are going to be, we're consistently paying ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I have the council manager office's budget beginning on page 105. The submitted council manager office's budget of $1.2 million represents a 28.3% increase of about $275,000 compared to the current, compared to the current year budget. This is primarily due to a reorganization that included moving the Chief Talent Development Officer from the Department of Human Resources, and the Youth Services Coordinator from Juvenile Services. In addition, reflected in personal services is the increase in salaries and employee benefits that I've already talked about, associated with the implementation of Phase 1 of the compensation study on the salary side, and then the $28,000 for the increase in city council member salaries, the rising health insurance costs, and Virginia retirement system rate increase. $16,000, there's an increase of $16,000 that was transferred from Human Resources to support citywide training and development initiatives, offset by a decrease in advertising. There is a $9,000 increase in other charges, reflecting increased funding for food and dietary supplies for the city managers' leadership forums, city council planning sessions, and special meetings, increased funding for laptop replacements and software licensing, increased funding for training for the Chief Talent Development Officer, and an increase in dues and memberships, dues and memberships for Virginia First Cities. Do you have any questions on the council manager budget?
Councilmember Vercheck. I'm not familiar with these Chief Talent Development Officers, so if we could just put those on the list. It looks like you got two extra employees in here, but I realize it was a transfer, but.
Yeah, the Chief Talent Development Officer was a position in the Human Resources Division that I, or department, that I moved over to the city manager's office, so that there would be stronger communication between the manager, the deputy city manager regarding citywide development of employees. And the Youth Futures Coordinator was formerly the Prevention Specialist in the Department of Social Services that was reclassified to a Youth Futures Coordinator from Juvenile Services.
I think I'd like to have both of those, two, two new employees on the list. I mean, I realize they're a transfer, but thank you.
The next presentation is Jeff Bandy with the City Assessors Office.
Good afternoon, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, council members. The biggest initiative that the Assessors Office has going forward is that we're implementing a new CAMA system, or rather, an upgrade to existing CAMA system, and it kind of explains some of the reason for the light items. Most of it was, you know, just the employee benefits increase. The 4750 was the contractual service. We hired a consultant to help us with the CAMA system upgrade. The system connects to so many different other systems in the city, we thought it's important to get an outside help with that. IT doesn't have a dedicated person for us, so we thought it would be important to get some consulting to help us go through the process and make sure everything works.
What is CAMA?
I'm sorry. The Assessment Valuation System for a mass appraisal valuation system, sorry, I'm using an acronym. It's currently called PROVAL. Thomson Reuters.
Can you pull the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's, sure. It's currently owned, Thomson Reuters owns the software system. They recently sold it to Harris Computer Products. Don't know that that's going to change anything, but nonetheless, they are no longer supporting the version we have, so it was essentially a upgrade. The other thing was, this, we're gearing up for reassessment year, and the off-year is when we do the mailings for the notices and the income and expense surveys, and so that's why the postage went up. Those are the main items. Any particular questions or concerns?
Just a moment. Can you explain that consultant piece again?
Sure.
Because we couldn't hear it. It was kind of awful.
Sure. We just thought, because the CAMA system connects to so many other systems in the city that are relied upon, we thought it's important, basically, the architecture of the software has totally changed in the background, and so basically, when we turn it on, everything will be broken. So we thought it was very important to get, we actually hired someone who's already installed the software at Riddick City and successfully done so, and he has a great track record for that, so we thought the money would be well spent. So we don't, it's, you know, and plus, it's a reassessment year, so we definitely want to get the system up and running, get all the kinks out before we get out the new valuation.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I just have a question. Would you say it's important or essential?
Essential.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hegelson, fellow, Councilmember Para.
Just a quick question on that, the contractual services. You know, I see the consulting of the 4750, but what are the other contractual services? I mean, when we're doing the assessment, aren't most of those done internally, or what are the other?
Yeah, so basically, the only other, I believe, is the copier. We have a contractual service agreement with it, and then the CAMA system, you know, there's a contractual annual renewal fee for that. There are cost tables, Marshall's of cost tables, we pay an annual renewal fee, which is part of the CAMA system contractual obligation.
So the contractual services we have here is like 36,000, of which four extra thousand is for the new CAMA system.
Right.
So the other 32 is for copiers and stuff?
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilmember Para.
Mine's not specific to this topic, so defer to Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bandy, on page, our page 108, with regard to the assessment of, performance assessment. The first question, it has the assessment to sale value ratio. In 2019, the actual was almost 0. assessment of performance assessment.
Sure.
The first question, it has the assessment to sale value ratio. In 2019, the actual was almost 91%, and then from 2020, you're projecting that it'll go down by almost 7%. Why would the ratio go down?
Sure, great question. Well, it's not a revaluation year, so the market's moving, but we're sitting still with assessments. So we only value every two years. Unfortunately, the market really took off right after we finished the last reassessment, and so that kind of left us in a bad spot. And as you can see, by the next year, or June of this fiscal year, we're going to be perhaps down to 80%. So there's a lot of catching up to do.
So the explanation is current values, as you said, are static, so the market's going to go up. This is a good thing. We're in the trough, but when it's reassessed again, you expect, assuming the economy and.
If the economy remains strong.
And all that doesn't hit us.
Yes, it's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Bandy?
Well, if we're ready to transition to the next department, I'll ask, while I turn the transition.
Okay.
Sir, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I had a question for him then. I'll let you head one on this.
No, sir.
Okay. So with the, I lost my question was. So under the assessment to sales ratio, so have you found, you know, people have a tendency to come in with their assessment and appeal and whatnot, so is this, has there been many appeals from the previous one that were held up, or?
No, the, we only, you have appeal rights when we change the value, and the last time we changed it was, would be July, effective July 1 of 19. So no one's really complained because we're well under the market, and they really, you don't have a right to appeal unless we change a value. In the off-year, we changed values for things like building permits and things of that sort, and anytime we change a value, you always have 30 days to appeal to us for it. But no, we haven't had any complaints to speak of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a question for Ms. Vercheck. As we're transitioning, I guess, to the City Attorney. Last year, it was a non-departmental expense, in fact, was for, I guess, accounted for all the salary adjustments. So all those salary adjustments were located in one area in the budget. This year, it appears to be spread across all.
That's the impact of the current year salary adjustments. In non-departmental, you will see a line item for the 3% general wage increase and the Phase Two adjustments that have not been spread.
And then we spread it once the budget is adopted.
They have not been spread.
So I thought I just saw that in the budgets that there's a 3% in the comments, there's a 3% increase, right? Salary increase, well, let's go back to Mr. Bandy's, salaries, increases in salary and employee benefits, reflecting salary adjustments resulting from Phase One implementation. All right, so that's, okay, got it. So then you distributed it, so then it looks like it's an increase year over year
Correct.
in the departments. However, that was accounted for as a non-departmental in the early budget. That's why the budget number for the prior year is less for the department. Okay, so basically, that, the top bullet in every department that talks about salary adjustments is baked in already.
Yeah, that's the 3% given this year with Phase One of the salary study implementation. So we thought, we always budget in non-departmental, and then once the budget is adopted, then we spread that from non-departmental to the individual departments. But it's easier to budget it in one place, and that way, if council makes a change, we don't have to correct every department. So we wait till the budget's adopted before we spread any money from non-departmental to each department.
But it's not in the adopted column. It's not part of the adopted budget, FY 2020 adopted budget.
No, that what's adopted, what is adopted does include those adjustments, though.
Does.
It does.
So then why is there a difference between the FY 2020 adopted, oh, it's the adopted from, when there's managers proposed.
Yeah, it's comparing.
But there's still a delta between the managers proposed and the adopted 2020 of the 39,000, which is the 2% increase.
That was given in 2020.
Right, but it was non-departmental when we approved it. Right?
Yes.
Am I missing something entirely here?
No, we just, the budget staff, after the budget is adopted, we just do a transfer from non-departmental into each department's budget reflecting that 2% increase.
So that 2% increase.
So the departments have their actual, they have their actual budget to know what it is.
Understand, but I understand that. But under the column adopted FY 2020, that should be $39,000 higher than what it.
This does.
What it shows, right?
Okay. It is not in this adopted column. It would still be in non-departmental. I apologize.
Okay. Does, so for every department, you're going to see that increase, but that increase was in last year's budget.
Yes.
So that's the salient point. All right, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Sorry, I got confused.
Good afternoon, Council. The City Attorney's Budget is on page 109, starts on page 109 of your book. There is a $33,324 increase. That is for the salary increases, the adjustment to the compensation study, the, all those standard figures.
But Ms. Irwin, we just pointed out, that's not really an increase. That's already there.
That's already built in there.
It's, so that's.
The only, excuse me, the only additional item is a request for $3,346 for a software program. 11 years ago, the IT Department recommended that our office implement a city law software program to scan, manage our documents and files. So we've done that, and they have covered that each year. This year, they announced that in order to balance their budget, they wouldn't fund that anymore, so we have requested an adjustment in ours so we can continue to use that software program. I know that seems like a small amount, but, you know, our operating budget hasn't been increased in several years, and we've had increases in our legal resources subscriptions, the cost of getting the continuing legal education programs for the attorneys, so we have requested an increase to cover that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Irwin? Mr. Perrow?
Mr. Irwin, I just wanted to ask about your salaries, and are you projecting enough personnel services for your future, for the future needs of your office? I don't know if you're planning any hires or anything. Do you have a?
We have, I'm getting ready to send council a letter. We have filled the vacant Deputy City Attorney position. A person will be starting in May. We're going to be able to cover that within our budget, so we're not planning to ask council for any adjustments in our budget, increases in our budget for salaries.
Well, thank you for that, and congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there are any further questions for you.
The next item we have, I also cover the risk management budget. That is on page 111 of your budget booklet. Other than the just typical salary increases that are being routinely factored in, there is an increase to cover insurance premiums. Several of our insurance premiums are going up. We purchased a new insurance policy for cyber security. We've also had some increases for the upcoming year for the, our property insurance, like for the wastewater treatment plant. As we build a new facility or upgrade facility, the value of our property goes up, so our insurance company raises our rates. They've raised our workers' compensation premium a bit. They've raised our social services premium a bit. They've raised the airport premium a bit, and our excess auto, you know, premium a bit. So all those increases are factored in. If we want to keep our current insurance program in place, we don't really have any control over that. We go out for a competitive process to get the best prices we can, but there is an increase in the number of our premiums for the upcoming year.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Just a quick question. So this is the operating of the self-insurance, and then with the self-insurance, we have a general, you know, fund, a reserve fund, I imagine. Where is that in this book?
You know, I don't know what the general fund is.
I mean, the self-insurance, with all the different insurance that you're talking about, as far as the reserve, this is the operations of it, but there should be then the reserve underneath.
The insurance reserve, is that in other funds?
Anyway, they can find that if you don't have it now.
Not in this office.
Are you asking a question?
Yeah.
It's on page 355 in the Risk Management Fund.
Okay, thank you. 335?
355.
533?
355.
Thank you. I'll look at that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Commissioner of Revenue Mitch Knuckles is up next.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm going to leave the first bullet alone. And there are two increases to my budget, and the first one is the NADA valuation, which we utilize with our personal property software. The software provider had basically been eating the cost of the increases for a number of years, but now they've decided, since they're coming annually, they're going to pass these costs on to the users of the software. The other increase is a address verification system we utilize in the office, and that, it's a product by Thomson Reuters. It's called CLEAR. And what that allows us to do, a lot of time is spent in the Commissioner's office with folks that have change of addresses. And we get change of addresses through our DMV records, through the state income tax records for the United States Postal Service, before we send out bills. Every time, we get change of addresses through that. We get it through the city utility billing system. But believe it or not, and a lot of y'all might not believe this, but as a tax man, a lot of citizens don't mind all those other places knowing where they're at, but they don't like the tax man to know where they're at. And we utilize this software, which actually goes to other states' DMV systems, other states' utility billing systems, and the biggest thing it checks for is the credit reports that are checked on these folks when they try to move into a new apartment or something like that. And we get tons of address changes through this product, and that's the other increase to this in my budget. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Knuckles?
Just a brief one.
Yes.
You have what you need to manage the short-term rental revenues?
Well, you know, we're working on the voluntary collection agreement. We've hit a roadblock with that, and we're still determined in our minds that we're going to get that voluntary collection agreement. If we do not get the voluntary collection agreement, as I've told the deputy city manager, we truly will have a voluntary collection agreement.
Fair enough. So, all right, well, let us know if we need to be of assistance.
Well, we will definitely be back with that if we're not, we're still pursuing the voluntary collection agreement, and that's what we're hanging our hat on.
Thanks for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
And to be clear, that the voluntary services, that's with Airbnb, correct?
Airbnb, the voluntary collection agreement is with them. We have reached out to the other turnkey VRBO, several of the other ones, and they're just not interested in doing the voluntary.
And Airbnb is just sitting on it, is that it?
Airbnb?
Is just sitting on it?
Well, yeah, and you want me to?
We're in a negotiation.
Okay.
In Mitch's world, there's no action pending at the General Assembly, so there's not a thorn in their side to make them want to do the voluntary collection agreement.
Understood. Thank you.
Too simple.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe we could meet again and discuss that for another year and a half.
I could point out one thing, please. At Turner's last meeting, I know you love ties, so the fact that we're two weeks away from opening day, I thought I'd wear my New York Mets.
Yeah, excellent, excellent.
I was wondering where the JMU garb was.
Changed a little bit. And for Bonnie, about whenever, I don't get to wear my suit as often as I used to, but at least 15 years ago, and probably 20, Bonnie gave me this little breast cancer pin. And whenever I get to wear my coat and tie, I always have that pin, and I always appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Witt, Financial Services, thanks.
Thank you. The Financial Services Budget begins on page 116. There are no new initiatives or additional requests for the Financial Services Budget. We do have a $10,466 increase for the cost of the external audit contract, and also in banking services due to a one-time saving recognized in the current budget, and this was from remaining prior year funds. We carried those forward. And also $102,225 increase in other charges for mailing services in Buildings and Collections Division. And this also is, we had some remaining funds that we carried forward to be able to use in 2020, so I need to replace those in 2021. So that's all. Glad to answer questions.
Councilmember Hegelson?
So mailing went from 268 to up 102,000?
Well, because in the 2020 budget, we were, we had to give a 5% cut, and how I found those to make my cut was I used some money that had been left on a PO through the years, and so I utilized that in 2020. So I didn't request those funds for 2020, but you can only spend that money once, so now I need to replace those funds in 2021 in order to mail out all the utility bills, tax bills, those type of things.
So basically, the difference went from 345 to 371, basically, if you smooth it. Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Can you explain to us the item one, the salaries and benefits?
I can.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Thank you.
James Liu, Director of Human Resources, will present the Human Resources Budget.
Good afternoon. In the proposed budget, yes, sir.
Maybe this to Bonnie, I suppose this. Lots of times when they do this, we kind of spend a little time on the goals and objectives, like how well they met. I was glad when somebody brought those up. I kind of forgot about that. Donna, if you have anything you want to share on the ratings and whatnot, I know those are part of your goals and objectives and the measures.
I'm just ecstatic. I think my staff and the leadership team, all of us work together really well to be able to keep our ratings up. It is a group effort. I need council or support to do that, which I'm blessed to have that support. In our last meetings with the rating agency, they were very complimentary of the city and the work that's being done here, and so I'm very proud of those ratings. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. In the budget, page 123, you would find Human Resources and Occupational Health. The city manager previously mentioned that the Chief Talent Development Officer was, a position was transferred to the city manager's office, so that accounts for a reduction in salary and benefits and contractual costs. However, there is an offset in that the city manager proposed a $40,000 increase in contractual services to fund the Occupational Health Fund due to historical costs. So that ends up with a $4,341 overall increase, so a reduction and then offsets. In addition to the $40,000 increase requested by the city manager, we have a $1,200 increase in other charges requested to fund dues and memberships for Human Resources staff members. We had no such line item in the 2020 budget. And then for unfunded items, things that had been requested that were not funded, include $12,000 to implement an onboarding program, and this is through NeoGov, which is the company that our current recruitment program, Performance Evaluation Program, and LEARN program are through, and this would be an additional module which would enhance our onboarding process and would give us a secure platform to be able to communicate with new hires and prospective employees. We also, since this information was. I, we also, since this information was finalized, we also encountered the fact that we have about 200 part-time employees who are not able to access the learn programs. So they are not able to complete any learning through our, our program that all full-time employees have access to. So we've been talking with NeoGov about having license for them to, to access. And so just today, I received from them a proposal for $18,500, which would include those 200 additional licenses and the onboarding program. So according to them, that is a, a bundling for a cost reduction. That is correct. Instead of twelve, twelve thousand, it would be eighteen-five. And then the other, other two items are that we had requested $7,000 to print our employment procedures and policies manuals. We ran out a few months ago and that did not get approved. We'll admit that we are at the point that we are confronting whether we would go to completely electronic manuals or continue to use the hard copy manuals, which we, up to this point, have handed to all employees and all new hires. And then the final unfunded item is we had requested $18,000 to fund a part-time position. Historically, we have had many requests for internships in the HR department. And from time to time, we have special projects where we need expertise to help direction, to obtain, from which we can obtain direction through certain projects. And so we would appreciate some extra funding to be able to rely upon should we have such a request or such a need. But otherwise, that's, that's the change. I would be glad to answer any questions, if I may.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Thank you, Mr. Liu.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I guess sort of two related questions. Are we struggling to recruit for our city departments? I mean, I know, I know this is true for some departments like, like LPD, but are we struggling to recruit for other departments?
Right. It is a challenge. And as we discussed in a previous presentation to council a few weeks ago, it's, it's just a different time than we are accustomed to and than we've seen in many years. So, and we have had to make adjustments. We've had to give concessions and do things that we didn't previously do.
Right. So does this budget provide you enough bandwidth to be able to recruit effectively?
Yes, sir. Within our department, yes, sir. To, I mean, to, to keep the recruitment process going, yes.
Okay. You feel you've got the software that you need in order to recruit effectively?
Well, this, this, that would be a, a big help. Not only would it be helpful as far as the work process and the onboarding process, but I think it would give a different image, a modern image to the city as an employer, that we don't have to just manually email things out to employees. But we give them the link to a system. They go in, set up their account, access forms that need to be completed, can start training and do their I-9 and W-4 and those kinds of things in that one platform. It's all secure, all authenticated, and so on. So I think it would just modernize us and give us a more modern and professional image than we currently have.
So right next to that, people are emailing their personal information.
Well, once we push them out through email, which, which does not have confidential information on it, then they can return it to us through seamless docs, which is a secure system. But then it's just one system that then we either have, we have to go in and manipulate all of those documents and that data. It's not housed in, in just a. Yes, correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Liu? Okay. All right. Councilmember Perrow?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I certainly think you need to get a PDF for, for, for your employee manuals. I mean, that just makes a lot of sense to me. And everybody should have access to that. What is HealthWorks?
That is a, a medical provider in the Nationwide building at, on Nationwide Drive. And they serve us in multiple ways. They provide, they are one of the providers on our panel of physicians to treat workers' comp claims. And most workers' comp claims are treated there. They also provide our occupational health needs. So employment physicals, pre-employment physicals, drug testing, DOT testing, all of those things. And then the third thing is that we have an agreement with them that they, we refer to them as our near-site clinic. And our employees can go there for, you know, respiratory things. If they suspect they have strep or, you know, minor, more minor conditions or injuries. And they, the employee pays nothing. We just get billed for the, the treatment. So it is a cost-saving to not run it through our, our health plan. So it's, it's more or less the replacement of the employee clinic that we used to have across the street, on Church Street.
So what was it last year, if it needs a four, what did we pay for last year if it needs a $40,000 increase for this year?
About $40,000 less than that. And, and so all firefighters have to have an annual physical. Police officers have to have a physical. And, and the frequency depends on their ages. So under forty every five years, forty to forty-five, four years, and so on. So all of those kinds of things are, are served through HealthWorks.
So that's under contractual services? So it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of?
Hundred seventy-five or so thousands, yes.
Okay. And, and the reason for the increase is because that's the way it's trending? So they've been, they've been going over the allocated budget, I guess, and you've been making up somehow internally?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right. So this is an adjustment to catch up with that. Do you think it provides value? You still believe it provides value at that amount?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And what Councilmember Wright said about moving to a, a software system, I think that's probably pretty smart. NeoGov, I guess, is the program. I used Workday previously. It's a pretty, pretty slick program. Is NeoGov the best, is that the best program to support what we need? Or have you analyzed other programs?
We, we favor that because it, it would be integrated with the other modules that we have. And we've been with NeoGov on our recruitment program for many years and are satisfied, yes.
And you could effectively convert to that?
Yes.
I mean, what I've seen in other departments, not necessarily city, but I just had an example of it at the Housing Authority, actually, where a new software was bought, purchased, trained, and never implemented.
Right. No, sir. We, we welcome it. We just, this past year, implemented the perform, for performance evaluations previously. We had no such program as a paper program. And then we switched to the learn, the NeoGov Learn for the training module. And we're very pleased with both.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No more questions? Thanks, Mr. Liu.
Thank you.
Terry Hutchins, our new, but old employee. Prior employee. You're not old, Terry, sorry. Will present the IT, the information technology budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Yes, I'm a, I'm an old dog, but a good mixture of private sector, twenty years with BMW and Framatone before here. So a new role for me. I'm, I'm excited about what IT is being used for. The, you know, the sixteen years of top ten finishes for the city of Lynchburg and the digital cities recognition is a, a sign that we're using the technology in the departments and that they're making advantage, taking advantage of it. So with that, I'll just kind of jump right into the, the IT proposed budget for this year. You know, it's made of two parts. We have a general fund and we have a technology fund. General fund is primarily, we're given a directive to, for the non-personnel expenses to, to be flat. And on page one twenty-nine, you can see that summary where basically it's about $438 less. But there are some major variances there, as there usually are in the, the details. So I'll run through those real quick through the, on page one thirty, the Administration Division, which is primarily responsible for security and looking over the department and franchises. I know we've got the telecommunication partnership franchise coming up in September with Segra. It's going to be a big one. But basically, for this one, just a couple of thousand over proposed for that non-personnel piece. And the way we did that was, there's about $10,000 of consulting that was normally here. We moved to the tech fund to kind of reflect that, that's done periodically. It's not a recurring expense, so it's more appropriate over in the tech fund. We also decreased the training expenses for this group by $5,000, reflective of the trends that's been happening the last couple of years. But we increased it about $16,000 for a cybersecurity training program that we, we've used a couple of times. And it's becoming real effective to help employees beware of those phishing attempts and all the attempted attacks that continue to kind of penetrate and find a way to catch us. So net increase for this particular area was, like I said, twenty-one, twenty-five. Over in the Application Services Division, which is mostly our developers and programmers, provide support for all the applications in departments. We have about a sixteen and a half thousand dollar reduction in this area. $14,000 of it is, as was mentioned previously, departmental, specific maintenance expenses that have to do with a particular application that a part, that a department's using. And it's more appropriate to put that in the department to reflect their operating costs as opposed to applications that span across all the departments in, in IT. So that was about $14,000. And also a reduction of $4,000 in training expenses, again, reflecting trends that we've seen in the last couple of years. Over in the next page, the GIS, Geographical Information Systems, we have about a $14,000 increase there, primarily for a little increase with the maintenance of the software. But the biggest expense there is the aerial and the oblique angle imagery flyovers that happen every couple of years. And so that's, that's going to be done in FY '21. And there's some shared expenses there, so. And then finally, in the Network Services Division, that's a pretty flat, no new variances there in that area as well. One of the things I feel really good about with IT, though, is we continually evaluate and look at expenses and try to prioritize them and figure out where the risk is and the return on investment. And as we were asked to look at things we would not have funded or even not even ask, I just want to take a quick minute just to share with you if, if we had the money to meet some other needs. This is a, a quick list of what they would look like. You know, having a new security manager quickly identifies areas that, you know, they're paid to be a little paranoid, so that's a good thing. But it's, it can be pretty costly. So some, he had a, a hit list of about five items. $20,000 for additional firewalls because our network integrates with so many other networks. Another $20,000 with this multi-factor authentication. We're doing that with email, but we're not doing it with remote access to the network. Network access control is about a $50,000 solution that manages unknown devices that attach to the, the city. And then a $20,000 a year outsourced security operation. So if we were to have an incident, like some of the other localities have had, there are agencies outside that will be glad to help manage that for you as opposed to trying to build that skill set internally. And, and the list goes on. GIS for a hundred, another $100,000, they could do a LiDAR contour mapping, which gets more accurate with the, the elevation and the contours of the area, which is very beneficial for stormwater runoff and site planning, property appraisals, and things like that. And also the, about a $6,000 a year for a server that would do interactive live maps with the GIS to provide citizens, you know, automatic vehicle tracking for where things are, like the, the trash or the snowplows and things like that. But we don't quite have the infrastructure to do that type of thing. And then finally, over in Applicate, well, Network Services, a lot of, some of the localities are buying subscription-based Office 365 now. And that's pretty pricey compared to what we do here in the city. We've been using Office 2010 for about ten years and had Office XP before that for about ten years. That's a long time to use a, a product that Microsoft says you should keep updating every year. But we've been pretty successful in saving that. Now, if we did this online subscription thing, it's another $163,000 a year. And over that ten-year period where we, we continue to use one version of Office, that's about a $1.3 million saving. So we, we see this stuff. We, we hear it all the time about, you know, you need to be doing this. But, and I feel really good about where the departments and, and the IT group evaluates these and tries to put priorities on them. That's our wish list, anyway, of things we didn't ask for this year. And then on the very last page of the budget, three, page three fifty-nine, that's where the summary of the tech fund is. And we're proposing about a $230,000 reduction in expenses for this coming year. And that's primarily because this fiscal year, we had to replace all the backbone core switches that, again, about every nine or ten years, that infrastructure needs to be updated. But at the same time, we added money to purchase Office 2019. So the, the net difference there is a reduction of $229,000 to the tech fund. And it's going to be a challenging year. We, we don't have any high-dollar and cost initiatives that we anticipate. But with some of the large projects, like the new fleet management system, the public works refuse, reengineering and billing, the upgrade of the revenue billing system, and a major overhaul of the IT service management package, I think we're going to do it. And thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Wright?
Thank you very much. Was, was your, is your wish list in here? Because I couldn't, I couldn't, I didn't, your wish list is not in the one you just outlined.
These are just items we didn't even submit because we made the assessment ourself that timing-wise, it'd be nice to do it this year, but we're not going to ask for it with the guidelines that we were given.
Understood. Would you be able just to put that in, in writing so at least we can see it?
We'll bring it to you next week.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Perrow, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Regarding your GIS flyover, doesn't the state supply that data, allow that data?
They, they provide some of it. And in fact, I think the, the cost is actually shared partially with it, them and with IT and other departments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, whenever the mayor, the vice mayor get out here and start handing out hardware and awards for recognitions and achievement, your department seems to be annually there in one way or the other. I really do commend you and, and your staff for your work. And of course, many of our other departments share the same prestige. But look on one, on page one thirty-four. I'm curious, in that assessment, the second section, it says that in terms of having network availability during normal general government business hours, you can do that 99.95% of the time. And your goal is 99.95%. What happens in that other five one-hundredths of a percent time? What causes it to go down?
Really great question because that's really, really hard to achieve. It's, it's only a few minutes a month that we, we can have something that's unavailable. And the answer to that is power outages. We have backup UPSs and generators. We don't have generators at some of the school sites. And that's when some of the network can go down for a little bit. But, and we, we'd like to encourage them to do that, but we don't have any control.
Is that something we have control over or is it beyond our means? Okay. Thank you.
It's a good job. It's a good question. Thank you.
And I have to follow up on that. Now, is that internal network or is that like ISP?
It's all internal, yeah.
All internal.
They're accountable for their own reliability.
I was about to say, because Comcast gives me about 60% reliability. All right. I got a, I got a, I got something from Luminos in the mail the other day. And saying they're available in the area. Hey, choices. I know, and actually, I know that your department has always worked on franchise agreements with providers like that. So thank you for your continued effort to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Givens and Pat Bauer are here for the Registrar and Electoral Board budget. Christine Givens and Pat Bauer are here for the registrar and electoral board budget.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Perfect. Thank you for having me here today. Our budget begin on 135. As a department, I submitted a flat budget. However, I did ask for a supplement. So if you were to look at the manager's proposal for that, she didn't add in those supplements that I did request. Of highlights of that is a part-time position to be transitioned to a full-time position. That position has not changed in 15 years or more. During that 15-year time period, election laws have changed. We've had an increase in our census. We've had an increase in our voter registration. We've had an increase in our voter absentee requests that we've had in the office. Of note, from the 2016 election, Democratic presidential primary election to this past one last week, we had a 30% increase just in that absentee request. So each year, these have been increasing every year, and yet the workload, it's increasing, and we're still very understaffed. If you were to look at Bedford County, they have 55,000 registered voters. It's in my supplement that I added in there. They have 55,000 registered voters. They have three full-time staff. Campbell County has 37,600 registered voters. They have three full-time staff. We have about 52,000 registered voters. We have two full-time staff. I'm a constitutional officer, so if you're going to say, the city just has one full-time staff and a half-time staff. So if you would consider the request to approve the manager's proposed budget to include that transition from a part-time to a full-time, our office would be greatly appreciative. In addition, due to election laws, there will be changes, and this is one of the reasons why we would need that, 45 days before an election now becomes no excuse absentee voting. Anybody in the city can come to our office and vote absentee, whereas before, you had to qualify to vote absentee. This changes a lot of things in our office. We'll probably have increased foot traffic in our office. If it's a federal election by law, we do have to store those ballot images on the thumb drives at the circuit court. Each of those tabulators only stores 5,000 at one time. We would then have to delete what's on there. If we had more than 5,000 voters per election, we would have to delete those ballot images before we put it on a thumb drive, and then we would have to start all over again. But if so, I requested a voter tabulation machine, an additional one for our office. We have one already, but for us to be able to keep that law and make sure that we have those ballot images for each federal election and those thumb drives to be stored for 22 months, it'd be very helpful to have an additional voter tabulation machine. That's about what I had to put on there.
All right. Councilmember Perro. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think it's important that, well, number one, Christine, yes, I've heard from, is it Commissioner Light? Is that appropriate? Is Chairman Light still on your, who's the group? I thought he was saying how important it was just to have that extra hand, that extra help.
No, the electoral board is Pat Bauer, David Newmeyer.
That's right. He swapped off.
Uh huh. Yes.
Okay. But, excuse me. Sorry, lost my voice for a second. Go to some, I would like to see the 2,600 added. Let's put that on the list. That is so sad.
That was a passion plea.
Please, council. Please vote!
Any further questions? Last, Councilmember Wright.
Are you talking about the 2,600 for voting booths and laptops? Yeah, I would also like to see that added to the list. And then I had sort of just a general question. I'm having a hard time understanding where the decrease is for you to be able to sort of absorb these additional costs in a level budget. So an increase of $37,000 in salaries, another $13,000 in contractual services and other charges, and yet it's only a, at the top, it says a 2.1% increase of $3,900. And I'm just wondering, maybe I'm just not seeing it. I don't know how it shakes out.
Sheet's submitted, and the manager opted.
Yeah, we didn't get the supplement, so.
I'm sorry.
So I just didn't know how that works.
We don't provide that here.
Okay. Thank you.
The electoral board budget was a flat submission also. No changes on that except for the voter tabulation and additional ballots. We may need to change the procedure on how we do absentee from one machine to paper.
Councilmember Hagelsohn?
The revenues from the Commonwealth, that goes to the, just to the registrar, right? So that's been flat, that $38,000 flat for three years?
Part of my salary is included in that, but it also includes the stipends for the electoral board. The state increased that by 6% this past year, so that has changed a little bit, but that is not what gets, what the city gets back necessarily. Not my, we, our, my salary is not 100% funded by the state. I think you guys get maybe 60%.
So the revenues, so in the budget, the revenues from the Commonwealth are $38,000, and it's been basically that same number for roughly for three years. So you just said it went up 6,000?
No, no, no. It went up by, yeah. The state increased the stipends by about 6%.
So this is wrong, the revenues from the Commonwealth will be up more than this?
I doubt it. No, because it.
So let's put this on the list, Bonnie, and then, because it looks like that's the same, but if it says that it's increased, this is actually showing the same, so. And if that's an increase of 6,000, that could cover the contractual services, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add an exclamation to what Councilmember Perro and Councilmember Wright said with regard to voting registration and voting counts. We know that throughout the country and in some parts of Virginia, irregularities in those aspects have caused some very embarrassing and tragic consequences in elections. We don't want Lynchburg to have that because we can't afford to have a half of employee and some voting booths and laptops. And likewise, registration is so important because it impacts our circuit court juries. If you properly register, you're going to be eligible for jury duty. And the two are two aspects of civic responsibilities that cannot be ignored, so I think this should be on the list.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Givens.
Thank you.
Robert Bailey State Treasurer will present that budget.
Madam Mayor, counsel, we submitted a flat budget. The increase that's on there is the salary that everybody was talking about. The only thing I didn't submit, and I wasn't going to talk about it, but I always want to talk about it, is the DMV Select function we provide service for here. We still have our part-time employee, and we're pressing every year, our number's going up by 12% to 14% in volume of work. And at some point, I will have to ask that we really do need that full-time person, because it's getting to the point now when we have schedule changes or shuffling around, at least I'm able to fill in gaps, but it's going to be consequences downrange if we want to keep doing that. Because as the people are coming, they're coming back every year, which is a good thing, but then we're getting new ones every year, so the growth is coming strong and heavy, and we do need to plan on this. So I'm trying to do the right thing this year and ask just what we need to operate, and please take that note of that, that at some point, we will have to have that position from part-time to full-time. That's my budget.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Mr. President.
Moving into judicial administration, our new circuit court clerk, Todd Swisher, will present their budget.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate that. I'd like to present a brief overview of the proposed budget for the circuit court clerk's office. I will preface my comments, if I happen to slip up and reference the Lynchburg Police Department. After 27 years there, please excuse me, that's probably going to happen. The clerk's office proposed budget begins on page 141 and extends to page 142. The FY 2021 budget reflects a $61,006 increase from the adopted FY 2020 budget. And as referenced earlier, this increase is solely due to an increase in salary and employee benefits or personal services within five different areas. A salary adjustment from a phase-one compensation study, a 3% state pay increase in July of 2019, rising health insurance costs, the biannual VRS rate increase, Virginia Local Disability Program rate increase, and group life insurance rate increase as well. Of that increase, that $61,000 increase, the state is responsible for $31,506 of that, leaving the city with an overall increase of $29,500. The operational budget remained flat as requested. I believe we can viablely operate at last year's levels, so I did not request any additional funding with regards to our operational funding, our operational expenses from last year. Just to provide some general context, as you know, our budget is comprised of both state and local funding. The state reimbursement is 64.3% of our budget, overall budget, and the city provides 35.7% of that budget.
Thank you.
And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Somebody else can first, I'm trying to cross-reference.
If anyone ahead of the maybe. All right. Looks like you're on then, Councilmember Perro.
All right. So I guess the supplement for the general district clerk, court clerks, of $36,000 that was not funded in the manager's letter was not your department. That's something else?
That's general district.
General district court clerks, but not the clerks. Got it. All right. Thank you. The attorney got me straight, too. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Welcome aboard. Thanks for your service to the city and glad to have you in that office. Mission, the police department, we're very glad to have you in the clerk of courts.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much.
On page 144, there is the circuit court judge's budget, which reflects an increase for the previously mentioned salary and employee benefits adjustments and $4,800 increase for Virginia code books and office supplies for the new judge. Commonwealth attorney Bethany Harrison will present her budget, which begins on page 146.
Good afternoon, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, members of city council. Our budget for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the City of Lynchburg reflects the fiscal year 2021 amount of $1,770,511. Currently, the city supports 39% of our budget. 61% is supported through the states. Thank you very much. Also included in the, our budget, you will see that we have grant funding, a little over $500,000, from federal and state grants that help fund some of the positions, part-time positions, in our office. In our budget, you will see that there are costs that we use to move the legal support receptionist position from an hourly position to part-time, including healthcare benefits. And in order to compensate for the inclusion of the healthcare benefits, we decreased the other charges line item, paying for things like office supplies, stationery, to absorb that cost to the amount of $7,217. If funding is available, we are asking for you to fund the legal support receptionist position going from part-time to full-time at a cost of $15,881. We are also asking for funding for an hourly in-house investigator position at the cost of $48,228. These positions, we feel, are essential to helping us with our goal, our mission, to do justice, to hold offenders accountable, to provide exceptional customer service whenever we can to our victims and witnesses of crime as well as to members of the public. I'll start with the legal support receptionist. That prior to 2016, for years, this position was a full-time position. In fiscal year 17, 2017, 2018, we were asked to reduce our budget as a mandatory request, and we reduced that position in order to create the cost savings, which certainly were returned to the city. But due to increased caseloads, the number of people that come through our office, and you know, there's always seems to be more paperwork, the more we try to go paperless, the more paper we produce, more reporting requirements, all of these things. Having this position as a full-time position not only helps in our customer service for those who are coming to the front desk, the person answering the phone calls, she's also providing the support services and the forms of generating subpoenas, entering data when the subpoenas are returned, and for the other legal assistants, when we have this part-time person, they're the ones that are stopping what they're doing to go man the front desk. And certainly for anyone, these people that we are serving, they have been through something that is probably the most traumatic experience of their life. For them to come to our office and have to ring a bell to get the attention of someone in the back is not really the, I don't know, customer service experience that we want to present. We want to always have someone there to greet them. So for this position, it would actually return it back to a full-time position, which is what it has been for years, for our other legal support assistants who had to make up for this, and they're also using their time to train this person. Takes 12 to 18 months to train the front desk person to be competitive in the market. Making this a full-time position would greatly help us there. In the past, I would say, six months, we've had about four people turnover in that position. We've had great candidates for the position who took full-time positions other places because we couldn't compete in the market, quite frankly. So it reduces their burden. They're not having, once we get someone up to speed, they can fulfill that position. And the individual that we have in that spot right now is a person we would like to hang on to, who is young and welcoming and has that personality you want. She's smart, learning very quickly. She is bilingual, which is a real benefit to us because that has been missing in our office for years. We would like to hang on to this person. For the in-house investigator position, we have throughout the years been able to fund this position through grants. It is something that provides a service to our victims of crime as well as to our police department. We are taking someone who has usually retired from the police department, has years, decades of experience, who can fill a gap in services that aren't provided anywhere else except to put that burden on our police officers, who are already stretched thin. The services this person provides is completes follow-up investigations with our victims of crime, can do things like take follow-up photographs of developing injury bruises for use in court, conduct interviews with people that save their defense witnesses. They can conduct the interview. We can use that in court. They provide transportation. Person has provided transportation to our victims and witnesses. We've had someone, I think as far away as South Boston, that he was prepared to pick up and bring to court because this person wanted to hold her offender accountable. The case ended up being continued. He didn't have to go, but that's how far we will go to help our victims of crime. He has conducted over 635 post-arrest investigations from 2016 to 2019. Because the current funding was through a three-year grant through the Violence Against Women Act, the Department of Justice. That position, that grant finished up in December of 2019. We've been able to use vacancy savings to fund the position up until June of this year. We have put in for another grant through VAWA, Violence Against Women Act, for an amount of $680,000. amount of $680,000 for a 48-month period, and we will know the result of that in September of this year. However, this being a position that is so, has been dependent upon grant funding, we've had periods where we didn't have this position. You know, the work doesn't go away, it's always there. And instead of it being someone in our office who can fulfill that requirement, it gets pushed off on our police officers. And they are busy enough, as is, quite frankly. So it's a unique position, it's a way to utilize someone who has those decades of experience from the Police Department, you know, not having to provide benefits, it's an hourly position, but really providing that extra service to our victims and witnesses of crime. The legal support receptionist position is a position that we can request reimbursement through the Compensation Board, just not for benefits. We have done that with other positions, and it has been granted to us for positions that the city has funded, and we seek reimbursement through the Compensation Board, so we try to be good stewards of the funds that you give to us. The in-house investigator is not a position that's reimbursable through the Workers' Compensation Board. But that's our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Nelson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for your explanation of these two items that were unfunded. With regard to the grant that previously funded or currently funds the in-house investigator, is that grant ending?
The one that previously funded him from 2016 to 2019 already ended.
All right, so.
And we used vacancy savings to pay for him, and we have enough to pay until June of this year. And then it will be unfunded. There is possibility that we could have that grant, however, this is a position that we believe is vital, and in my experience has been vital to this office. We have, our populations that we serve are indigent, they're transient, we frequently have to go to them, and having someone who is law enforcement trained, certified, can go with you as a form of protection, but also someone who can serve subpoenas on people and, you know, provide all these extra services has just been greatly beneficial to our ability to prosecute cases.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to put both of these items on the list, inasmuch as we already stress our police officers out in the current amount of responsibilities they have. We all have heard about the intensive protocols and procedures involved in body cameras and evidentiary retention and processing of that. This in-house investigator will assist in that process and relieve responsibilities on, again, staff in the Police Department. And there's no question, having quality follow-up with citizens who are victims, the families who have been victimized by those that are being prosecuted enhances the community relationships between our law enforcement and those citizens who we have a duty to protect. So I think this needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And for Councilmember Perrow.
You said that the number of cases has increased over time and the workload that your office has. Would you mind, do you have any documentation that you could share with us?
I do not have the information before me, but I can certainly email that to you and to the rest of the members of council.
Yeah, just to the city manager.
The city manager, okay.
And she'll get it to us.
I can do that.
That'd just be interesting to see, maybe the past five years, over the past five years or so, if that's available, anyway. And I do think Mr. Nelson brings a good point. I might, when it's time to discuss it, I might like to further maybe segment that between funding for two or three months and then holding some of that and maybe the reserve for contingencies. So if you do get the grant, if you do hope you get the grant, then she wouldn't need all of that. But if she didn't get the grant, then we could, we'd have it in the reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We usually don't, we, over the years, we've made a policy or a practice to not backfill grants that haven't been issued. So if somebody got a grant and then that position is gone or wasn't submitted timely or whatever happens with that, we've just kind of made a practice of not backfilling it if the grant runs out. So was the grant submitted and just hasn't been?
We submitted it previously, we were not awarded it for the next three-year period, but that's why we submitted it again. So you can think of maybe a one-year gap. But that's how it is with grants, as you know. Sometimes they're awarded to you, and sometimes they decide they have moved the ball to some other goalpost and they want to go with that, so.
Thank you. Your predecessor equated it to drug, to a drug, basically, once you're on the grant, it's hard to, it's hard to kick it off. Grant cracker, that's right.
Well, I will say that, you know, in the losing this grant, we had other positions that we moved around and we shifted around, and so this one in particular, this is why we singled this one out, because of the great value that provides to our office as well as with the Police Department.
Understood. And I just want to thank you for your service to our citizens.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
On page 150 is the General District Court budget, where there is very little change from the adopted budget, but this is where you'll see the request for the $36,000 salary supplement for the General District Court Clerks that was not funded. On page 1.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson.
Mr. Verchik, when we were talking last week, I mentioned that I had heard something, not definitively, but something with regard to the legislature allocating funding for a number of General District Court Clerks in Virginia, and you hadn't heard about that. Do you know if that's a reality or possibility?
We need to look into that. I have not heard of that.
Okay, thank you.
On page 151 is the funding for the Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court, and that budget is proposed to increase by $7,000 to fund the replacement of office chairs. On page 152, there is a slight increase in contractual services and other charges for the magistrate. And Chief Sheriff Sloan is here to present his budget.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, distinguished members of City Council, Madam City Manager and your staff. I am Don Sloan, Lynchburg Sheriff, and I'm pleased to stand before you tonight presenting the budgetary needs of the Lynchburg Sheriff's Office. In the overview of the Lynchburg Sheriff's Office budget on pages 153 through 155, our request for fiscal year 2021 budget shows an increase of $138,593 over last year's budget. This increase is comprised of the following items. Number one, $115,720 increase in salaries and benefits. The $72,047 increase in the salaries line on page 154 reflects a salary adjustment from pay increases from the State Compensation Board. It also includes in this total an increase in the temporary funding of $22,000 for part-time deputies to operate the LiveScan fingerprinting system coming online at General District Court commencing July 1, 2020. A $43,673 increase in the employee benefits line, also on page 154, due to the pay increases, rising health insurance costs, the biennial VRS increase, Virginia Local Disability Program rate increase, and group life insurance rate increase. Number two, a $10,839 increase in the contractual services line for the next five years reflecting the first-year payment of a five-year warranty contract for 25 new replacement tasers. All current Sheriff's Office tasers are over six years old and are over one year beyond their contract warranty life. These are the same tasers currently used by the Lynchburg Police Department and the Lynchburg Sheriff's Office. This is a reoccurring cost over the next five years with the fiscal year 2021 budget being the first year. The new tasers will be purchased and deployed after July 1, 2020. Number three, $11,100 increase in the other charges line reflecting the replacement of three Magna Scanner walk-through metal detectors located at the front door security checkpoints in Circuit Court, General District Court, and Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. This is to replace three aging walk-through Magna Scanners that were purchased 16 to 18 years ago with up-to-date technology. The Magna Scanner located at the entrance of the Clerk's Office in Circuit Court was replaced last year when that original unit failed. Statistics from 2018 show that the Lynchburg Courts had 163,705 persons walk through our four metal detectors located at the entrances of our three courts and the Clerk's Office. The security checkpoint at the Circuit Court Clerk's Office stopped 1,105 dangerous items from entering the Clerk's Office. Fifteen of those were firearms, 769 were knives, with various other items turned away, clearly showing the significance of each Magna Scanner securing our court facilities. Number four, a $934 increase in the internal service charges reflecting a mandatory increase for Fleet Services. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
May I ask Sheriff Sloan?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Perrow.
So if somebody walks in with a firearm, the magnetron goes off, what's your reaction? Police sir, would you leave?
Well, usually what they do is when they come in, they see the magnetometer and then they self-identify that they have a firearm. Because again, historically with the Clerk's Office, because we did not have the security set up for so many years, people were used to coming in and carrying concealed or whatever. But once that was secured, when Clerk Wingfield was here and we put the magnetometer up, people are still getting accustomed to that. Where in normal courts, people will come, they're used to the fact you're not coming through with some type of a firearm or a knife or whatever, so.
So most of the dangerous objects you find are coming through the Clerk's Office and not necessarily the courts?
That's right. So that's still the majority that we're finding.
Okay. I think you're our last constitutional officer here tonight.
Okay, very good.
And I just wanted, I don't have any questions, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to our citizens, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Sheriff Sloan.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Public Safety section, which includes Police, Emergency Services, and the Fire Department, Chief Udema will make the presentation on the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. The Police Department budget begins on page 158 in your binder. Just to remind you, that covers four different areas: police operations, range, off-duty, and animal control. Our submitted FY 2021 budget was a 3.4% increase over FY 20's adopted budget. I will not go into the benefit stuff, I think everybody understands that from previous discussion. It does include a reclassification of an hourly position to a part-time position in our training unit. It also includes the addition of a part-time position in our CLEA, which is our accreditation group. Right now, that position is staffed with a full-time sworn officer, and we think it's a better use of our resources to have that officer doing more traditional law enforcement duties and bring in a non-sworn position to manage our accreditation. It also includes, some of these increases rather are offset by the elimination of the Wildlife Management Program and related hourly position. I can certainly answer more questions on that as we go through. There's a $53,000 roughly decrease in contractual services. This includes an increase in vehicle maintenance and repair, includes an increase in investigation services to cover costs for polygraphs, backgrounds, and psychological evaluations for our new hires. That is offset by a decrease in our miscellaneous contractual services due to removing a one-time charge from last year, which was our TASER maintenance contract that we paid for about $57,000. It also includes a decrease in the number of CIT Assessment Center jobs worked by officers, and again, that's put in there just to more accurately reflect what we're seeing in terms of the hours our officers are working over there. There's a $7,400 decrease in internal service charges. That's directly from Fleet Services, they give us those projections. There's a $27,000 increase in other charges that reflects increased contract pricing for a variety of supplies, everything from uniforms to holsters to bulletproof vests, ammo, flashlights, and everything in between. Is also offset by the removal of protective wear, uniforms, ammo, and hunting licenses, again, for the aforementioned Wildlife Management position. It includes a $4,500 decrease in rentals and leases. We do rent some vehicles for some undercover operations. We were able to renegotiate that contract and realize about a $4,500 annual savings there. As you saw earlier, the manager's proposed FY bud, sorry, FY 21 budget included some additions to what we presented, which obviously was our zero-based budget as requested. There's Microsoft Office 2010 software costs, there are software maintenance fees for things like forensic software and our scheduling and payroll software. There's vehicle maintenance, as the manager mentioned, for having to migrate away from sedans that are no longer purchased. We did, of that money, we were able to allocate some in our current budget towards that to offset, it's about a $26,000 cost, we were able to manage 6,000 of that, so it nets at about 20. Rifle vaults to properly secure our rifles and our vehicles, aftershock sirens, which I can certainly get into and explain what those are and why we have those, along with Opticom traffic light preemption capabilities, and recruiting funds for obviously our ongoing need to do better job in recruiting in the many officers unfortunately we have to do each year. There's also a $15,000 increase in training for our computer operations staff, as you heard Mr. Hutchins say earlier, it's just imperative that we stay on top of some very critical infrastructure that we have and make sure that our staff is properly trained to manage that and troubleshoot that as the need arises. In addition to those items, if funding were available, we did request the following items: $523,000 for five sworn positions, that includes three police cars with that as well, that's salary benefits, uniforms. You know, that's something you've heard me saying ever since I became Police Chief, is we need more police officers here. I will talk in a couple of minutes about a workload study that we're very close to completion on, that we discussed, I believe, back in the fall when I was before you previously. Just so you know, we have applied, and we'll be going in front of Finance Committee at the end of this month for a COPS grant. The way the timing always happens on that is the applications always do before we can get it to Finance Committee, but we will be bringing that forward. Our ask in that is for that COPS grant is seven police officers. Those would be used to fund a full-time CERT team or Special Investigations Response Team. That is something, again, that we kind of ad hoc put together every year, and we're Robin Peter to pay Paul there. We're taking officers from other full-time assignments to try and address guns, gangs, and drugs and violent crime in our city, and we feel that there's absolutely a need to have a full-time unit to do that. We're hopeful that that grant comes through. I will tell you, we've applied for that COPS grant for many, many years. We've rarely been successful, primarily because they're focusing those grants on localities that have laid off police officers and localities with high violent crime rates. So I am very comfortable and confident to say we don't have high crime, violent crime rates compared to other communities, so, but that is the trade-off when it comes to grant funding. In addition, if funding were available, we would want another, about $4,800 to address some other recruiting issues for billboards. I know that may seem like an antiquated way of doing business in 2020, but we've gotten a lot of feedback from some of our folks that are applying for us, saying, hey, I saw, you know, your billboard on 460 or on Lakeside Drive or wherever it may be. And quite honestly, we're trying to hit every avenue we can for recruiting, whether it be traditional means, social media, or anything outside of the box we can do to try and get more officers in here. I would include $18,000 for digital forensic software. That software would allow us to unlock phones in critical incidents where phones are involved in serious crimes, everything from murders to, you know, sexual assaults, child sexual exploitation, and things along those lines. Our plan is to try and use asset forfeiture money to fund that beginning in FY 21 if need be, but that's going to be a recurring cost certainly going forward after that. The $17,000 is for honor guard uniforms and supplies. You know, our officers are asked a lot of times to do different ceremonial activities as a part of the Police Department, and we've not updated that equipment in well over a decade to make sure that our folks are looking professional and representing not just the department, but the city. And then lastly, about $11,000 in a quantum backup server. So this is a enterprise backup server. Right now, we use a legacy homegrown system developed by a retired IT manager that we have. It's working okay right now, but when it doesn't work okay, that creates some problems. So this is an enterprise solution. Again, this is something we're going to immediately, short-term, fund out of this current budget through some managed vacancy savings. However, there are recurring costs that come along with that each year. So our goal would be to stabilize that system so that, obviously, there's redundancy in place for all the technology that we use. One thing in discussing with the city manager, we wanted to give you as well is outside of this budget year, future things that are coming down the road. Some of them are quite substantial, I'm not going to sit here and sugarcoat them for you. Obviously, the building, as you well know, is a continuing work in progress. I'm happy to tell you that just this past week, we interviewed all the architectural and engineering firms on the RFP for design. I mean, we are very close, a team comprised of several folks from throughout different city departments are working on that, and we're very close to hopefully beginning contract negotiations with one of them to get that underway. I will also, though, just say from a CIP perspective, that is also the money allocated in CIP. in CIP was allocated based on a study that's three years old, and it's also something that, quite honestly, we probably won't begin construction on for another year and a half to two years. So by the time that shovel hits the ground, you're looking at potentially close to five-year-old data that we're basing CIP on, so. And obviously, the economy right now with everything going on is kind of all over the place, but that's something we'll need to take into consideration as we look at future CIP budgets. Salary structure, we are looking and have been working collectively with our PBA partners and our administrative staff at a career progression proposal. I sat down and discussed that with the city manager. After discussing that, we are going to get that, the proposals that were put together for that, to get Corn Fairy involved, the same group, as you know, that did our pay study. We want to vet that against industry standards so that we can make sure those are in line. So some of our PBA folks are here. I appreciate their efforts on that project. That was a collaborative project between us and them. We're going to continue to work on that. But basically, what that is doing is taking our current progression system, which we have in place, that goes from police officer to police officer two, police officer three, and trying to stretch that, basically, to give some of our officers a better idea of, okay, if I meet certain criteria, and I'll tell you right up front, this is not a step system. This is not a, oh, if you just exist here for this many years, we'll give you this much money. That's not something we believe in. We believe in making sure that there are criteria and there are standards that are met, so the officers have to meet certain time and grade, the officers will have to meet certain commitments from a training perspective, they'll have to meet certain commitments from a community engagement perspective, and all that will be spelled out in order for them to move up those progression levels. So that's a work in progress. The early estimates, again, prior to vetting it through Corn Fairy, would be a recurring cost annually of anywhere between six hundred thousand and a million dollars. We also have a need, and this need is shared by both us, the fire department, and Department of Emergency Services, to upgrade our RMS, our records management system, along with our CAD, computer-aided dispatch system. Those are, I will speak in the other two as they get up, can certainly add to this, but in our case, a legacy system. The system that we have has been bought out multiple times by multiple different vendors, and the vendor that is now housing our records management system, and I believe our CAD and Ms. Foster can speak better to this, but they've basically told us they will continue to support that, but they are not going to invest any new infrastructure or any new money in upgrading anything. So it's a legacy product. I will tell you, the sticker shock on this one is not good, but you're looking at, for those two systems, across three different departments, potentially upwards of about five million dollars. Now, that's a huge system overhaul that is a major project. And again, I know I'm here delivering great news to folks who are struggling to always find money, but I'm trying to be transparent with you so you understand what the needs are going forward as we go down the road.
Do you have any further information?
Yes, ma'am. And again, that, those are guestimates right now. I would love to put that out at some point down the road, once we, once we have vetted that with a work group amongst three departments to determine what that looks like, but that's some information, and Ms. Foster can speak a little more to that based on her conversations she's had recently. Additional vehicles is something else. We've had a longstanding shortage of vehicles in the police department. Our history unfortunately has been, as we develop over the last ten-plus years, new work groups or new units that we haven't had before based on needs and, quite honestly, demands from the community, we've basically stolen vehicles from our patrol function and used those vehicles in these other units, which leaves our patrol function short. So we look at, we are looking at about a need currently for about twelve additional vehicles. The challenge in not doing that is it sometimes requires our officers to double up in cars. There's certainly a time that that may be beneficial, but overall, single officer cars are much more efficient for our operations. That estimation of that, all those vehicles fully equipped and outfitted, is about a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar price tag. I heard Sheriff Sloan talk about TASERS. We signed a five-year plan with TASER. We did not upgrade to the newest model they offered for a cost-saving thing. We were happy with what the current model is. We think it serves our needs. But I will tell you that in five years, it will be two generations old, and we'll need to do that. So again, that's a little ways out, and, you know, depending on how costs change over that time period, that plan usually runs about sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year when you sign that contract. Body worn camera and fleet cameras, we're on contracts for those as well. We're currently on two, on year two, rather, of a six-year combined contract for those. That's about two hundred and eight thousand annually for body worn cameras and about ninety-one thousand for fleet cameras. Again, the cost on that is really unknown, but again, at the end of that six-year contract, that technology will certainly need to be updated. You all were gracious enough, after we had a very tragic incident where one of our officers was shot in October of eighteen, to approve some emergency funding for patrol rifles for our officers to keep them safe. We're very grateful for that. We are feeling those rifles now, and our officers are much better equipped to deal with a situation like that, should they come across it. But I think you remember, I told you, my longer-term goal is to equip all of our officers with rifles. The estimated cost, we're actually, believe it or not, out of one hundred and seventy-four, we're only forty-seven rifles short right now, okay? So the estimated cost of that is about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Again, these are all long-term. I'm not saying I need you to fund these next year for all these. We will certainly prioritize those for you as we go, just trying to give you a heads-up. We're also looking at things like our handguns. We usually replace those about every five years or so. The first question is, I've got guns that are ten or twelve or fifteen-year-olds, they still work? Yes, they do, but technology changes and a lot of other things change, and of course, again, our folks depend on those for their lives, not necessarily to go out and target shoot with them. That cost is about, to replace guns, holsters, and all that, we do trade our current weapons in. Every time we do that, we get several hundred dollars for each weapon to defer some of the cost of a new weapon. That's about a fifty thousand dollar cost long-term. We are looking at different uniforms potentially and duty belts for our officers. What you see here, quite honestly, is much more expensive than some of the other things we could be buying. There is a trade-off between professional image, right? I don't want my officers out there looking like stormtroopers, quite honestly, but can we find something that's a little more cost-effective, that's a little more comfortable, a little more practical for our officers, and still projects a positive image? So we're doing some initial research on that right now, and we'll ultimately be able to figure out what that looks like as we get a little bit further along. We, last year, added money to the budget to include post-hiring psychological examinations. Officer wellness is a huge focus for our staff. They are seeing and dealing with things that no human being should have to see or deal with. So what we're trying to do in this current fiscal year is get half of our staff to psychological exams to make sure that we are taking care of them, quite honestly. The goal down the road is to do that for all of our sworn staff, as well as some of our professional staff. Some of our professional staff are transcribing interviews of people talking about molesting young children, and that's traumatic for them to sit there and listen to that and have to type that stuff out. And then last, before I stop talking and answer any of your questions, we did complete a workload assessment. We're in the final stage. I know Councilmember Wright, you had asked, back in the fall, we were presenting on some other information, and you said, hey, have we ever done that? So we have gotten that data compiled. That was a significant, many, many-month project done by our intelligence detectives and some of the analysts in our intelligence unit, as well as some other folks. I will tell you right now, on first glance at that, the number I told you of two hundred officers is probably low, and it also includes some professional staff. What we're trying to do is condense that information down to present it to you. We're vetting all that information, and we will have a work session with you, I believe, tentatively scheduled for early June, to sit down with you and kind of walk through that. We'll certainly get you the documentation well in advance so that you'll have an opportunity to look through it, because it's a lot, and we want to make sure that we have it all accurate and presented in a manner that is easily understandable. So with that being said, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate the work you do for our community. A question, as reference to the five twenty-three, is this for five new additional officers?
Correct.
Now, does that count into the ones we haven't filled currently, or?
So these would be five brand-new positions that don't exist, along with all the equipment and supplies for them, and then that five twenty-three number also includes three vehicles that are fully equipped. So the vehicles, going off memory here, fully equipped with everything we put in, including maintenance and fuel and everything that we kind of manage out, is about a sixty-five thousand dollar investment, and then officer salary and benefits is in the area of about fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So do we think we can fill the positions we currently have budgeted?
That's the million-dollar question, right? So our recruiting staff has been really bumping up their efforts. So if you recall, last time I was in front of you, we said that we had fifteen vacancies in the previous academy we wanted to fill. We can only find eight. This current academy that's in right now, we needed to hire sixteen. We actually hired thirteen. So we're tracking in the right direction, and our staff is going out of the way to do things to try and bring in new talent. So, you know, you had asked, and I think Councilmember Perro, I won't call you to the carpet, but I will, you said, when we get fully staffed, come see you, and we'll look at additional funding. I should have come to you on December twenty-fourth at two PM in the afternoon, because for about two hours, we were fully staffed, and then unfortunately, someone resigned that afternoon, right? But my goal in talks with the city manager is if we can fill all the seats for an upcoming academy, that would be a point we would certainly want to come back in front of you and ask for a means of funding some additional positions. I think they're definitely needed in a lot of areas, and when you get that workload assessment, it will break it down and show. And I will tell you, that workload assessment in a couple of the areas shows that, in a couple of areas, we might want to downsize a couple. So this isn't just a give-me, give-me, give-me workload assessment. This is an actual hard numbers, data workload assessment that shows, based on some national statistics, as well as approaches taken by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, ICMA, and several other bodies that kind of set industry standards for some of those things.
Okay, but so the plan currently is to fill the current positions and also increase additional positions?
That's correct.
Thinking we can fill those?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Yes, I may have missed this. So how many positions do you have that are funded that you don't have filled?
Getting to that right now, give me one second. All right, I must have skipped over it. I'm going to go off memory here. So right now, hard vacancies, meaning we have a position and do not have a body to fill it, ten, as we sit right now, yeah. And then operationally, meaning those ten, plus the ones that are in the academy, plus ones that are in field training, plus military leave, plus sick leave, injury leave, administrative leave, we're standing at about thirty-eight or thirty-nine, I believe. We averaged, last year, over the calendar year, we averaged about thirty-one operational vacancies at any given time. So it's challenging. We still deal with turnover, unfortunately.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder had another question.
This one follow, sorry. Can we add this to the list to discuss possible funding for that?
All right.
And just to give you some context, Vice Mayor, we were looking at our turnover data, and, you know, in the last four years from our sworn positions, we've averaged twenty-five officers leaving each year for the last four years, the average. When you go back as far as two thousand and one, okay, now we are one hundred and seventy-four sworn positions. You go back as far as two thousand and one, we have turned over our entire sworn population at the police department two times exactly, okay? So three hundred and forty-eight positions, sworn positions, we've turned over since two thousand and one. You all invest a lot of money in these young new officers to get them where they need to be, to be productive officers in your community, and that is a lot of money. We could provide you the numbers on what that looks like, I think we have previously, on what it costs to train a new officer and get he or she up to speed and equipped and all that, and that's, that's a significant investment by the community that unfortunately oftentimes goes elsewhere.
Thank you. Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and, you know, I think it's, I don't think it's a matter of necessarily focusing on the unfilled vacancies, because if we don't have them filled, that's one thing, where you, and you don't spend the money on it, but the other thing is the morale. I mean, so if we, if we can say, hey, we're at least concerned, and we recognize the importance of public safety, and we're going to add more positions, that may mean there are more vacancies, but at least the folks that are out there on the street and keeping us safe actually see us making headway, and I think that is critical. So having these on there, I think, is an easy start. If we, if you can't fill them through the hiring process, you know, obviously, there's extra funds in there and you can, and do like apparently you did the other day, which is good, and making sure that we can keep some of these people, especially the officers that we've trained and have done a great job to make sure, as best as we can, to keep them, and make sure there's a long-term plan, a long-term beneficial plan, and I appreciate you talking about not having a step system, but actual meritorious type of increase. So having those kind of plans where people can actually see the beauty and the benefits of continuing on. You know, lots of the other items that we talked about, it's even more critical here. You know, we talked about a growing city, so we have more voters, so we need an extra person, and, you know, what I'd like us to really be able to do in this budget, if possible, is really focus on these core, critical needs, because you turn this corner, much more, I mean, it's hard on property values, it's hard on neighborhoods, it's hard on keeping good people in the city. So as best as we can do, you know, to make sure that we're able to recruit, I went to one of the recruiting events the other day, and it was good to see a lot of folks that they're meeting the bushes. So the other one I'd probably put on there is the extra advertising. Doesn't have to be the billboards, but wherever, you know, you've obviously find the best place. I know it says billboard advertising, but if billboard advertising works, put it in there. If it's not, something else, so I'd like to see that on there as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I was going to add the billboards myself. You don't have to call me on the carpet for saying that, and I'll stand by that. I was getting ready to say it again, but it sounds like it's on the list, and we'll discuss it.
Thank you.
Do you currently have the gray key software?
I'm sorry?
Do you currently have the gray key software?
We do not currently have.
How, how, can you tell me how often that may have been abused for you last year?
I could certainly get you numbers. I will tell you anecdotally, that there are very few crimes our detectives investigate anymore that do not involve digital technology. So we used to be a crime scene unit of three crime scene detectives that were your more traditional CSI folks that would go out and collect blood, take pictures, find fibers, things like that. Now we are transitioning and finding ourselves, there is a much greater demand for digital forensics to be able to get into phones and computers and things like that. So I can get you numbers, certainly, but I would tell you, easily, there's probably seventy-five percent of the calls that our detectives work, or crimes our detectives work, that involve that type of technology. And unfortunately, you know, a lot of these phones are locked, and if we don't have passcodes, you know, and you see, this is not just a local issue, this is a national issue on a lot of different fronts, and, you know, that, being able to unlock that phone may be the difference between putting away a sexual predator or not, or maybe the difference between arresting a violent criminal or not, so.
So when my daughter figures out how to change her passcode on the phone we allow her to use right now, could I bring that to you and you help me into it if I need to correct something?
We will have to operate within the ethical boundaries of...
Because this could really depend on whatever...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. So let's put this, let's put this on the list, please, as well as the backup, the eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five for the backup. I think that would be important as well. All right.
Thank you.
And I think Councilmember Higginson brought up some really great points about, about the number of officers we have. I agree with you. I think we're probably understaffed with a growing city. I'd like to see the positions filled before we move ahead, because, well, just balancing, balancing the numbers, and I'm very interested to see the results of your workload study. And did you say that you had some of your internal folks working on that?
Yeah, I'll tell you, we, many years ago, not this council, but a council, approved fifty thousand dollars to go to PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, and do a study that they commissioned. I will, I don't know how I politely say this, but we could have spent fifty thousand dollars a whole lot better. This document that I've seen makes the PERF report look like a kindergartner did it. The PERF report was something that we actually, in the first draft, were reading through, and it said, the Tampa Bay Police Department. I mean, it was literally a copy and paste type of thing where they go in and change a name, get your data, get your numbers, and change it. This is a, from the ground up, never been done before document, and a lot of our folks in our intelligence unit, our detectives there, and our analysts there, and several other folks around the department have helped with that, but this has been a multi-month project.
And based on all the free time that your officers have, you're able to do this, that certainly explains why it's taken a while to develop it.
Yeah, so the first draft, so you know, I got is two hundred and seventeen pages.
Yeah, so the first draft, so you know, I got is 217 pages, and again, we're gonna try and condense that down, because I know you're all busy folks, and we want to make sure we hit the highlights. If you want ultimately the full 217 pages too, but we're gonna try and give you an executive summary that hits the high points, and we could provide the data to back up all the...
Well, I don't think I realized that you were doing that internally. My kudos to your officers there working on that, and my sincere appreciation of their efforts. Over and above their regular duties.
I appreciate it. It's at least a $50,000 savings, if not more, because that was many years ago, so thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, thank you very much for a succinct report covering a whole lot of stuff. I look forward to that work session, where you talk about the five officers and the three additional fully-equipped police cars. With regard to what you said earlier, as far as needing 12 additional units, when you bring that report back, or as soon as possible, can you identify what the cost of the cars are outside of the five officers? So, if we need to address that, we can deal with two problems, so you don't have to be borrowing as many units from one type of investigation to accommodate others.
Yes, sir, we'll get you the hard numbers. Yeah, we'll get you the hard numbers. They're about 65,000 fully-equipped, but we'll get you the hard numbers, you have that, and one of the challenges there, too, I didn't mention, is, you know, these cars, like, for example, right now, we've got 13 people in the police academy. When they go to driving training, we have to apply, oh, sorry, supply one car for every two officers. That's seven vehicles we've gotta take for over a week, I think it's a week and a half they're going to training, so for a week and a half, seven cars are out of the loop. And also, you know, then when those come back, we take them up to fleet services, they make sure they go through them real well, because they're driven very hard at driver training, because our folks need to understand the capability of the vehicles, and more importantly, their own capabilities of driving those vehicles, so.
And with regard to the Gray Key, unlocking the electronic devices, currently, you said in your report that you have to go somewhere else to have access to that equipment. Where is that, Charlottesville, Richmond?
The last time I know, and I've got one of my forensic detectives, but I think we went as far as Maryland the last time, physically put a detective in a car with that to maintain chain of custody, drive it up there, have them look at that, is that correct?
Is, to Maryland, mostly, throw out everyone.
Okay.
Is there any practicality into going into some regional cooperation to get a unit for Lynchburg and the four surrounding counties and split the $18,000 cost?
Certainly something...
Divided by five, that's not a lot of money.
Right, yeah, certainly something we could explore. You know, a lot of times, those counties rely on state police to do most of their evaluations and examinations of digital forensic-related things, so I don't know if they would have somebody in-house that would have the training or expertise to do that, or whether they'd be willing to, but that's certainly something we could explore, yes.
Does Lynchburg not use the state police because of chain of custody issues?
No, we just, we decided many years ago, when we started moving towards a digital forensics group, it was because we were sending off technology, whether it be a cellphone, a laptop computer, whatever, to the state, and there was a six-to-nine-month turnaround time on that. And again, this is often critical evidence, whereas our folks can do a lot of that stuff in-house, and we can prioritize our own work. When we send it to the state police, it gets put in a queue, quite honestly, they take them as they come. You know, if we get something that happens tonight, that's, you know, that we really need, we can do it first thing in the morning.
Somebody's holding hostage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Thank you, Chief Sudama, for your report. You know, one of the most important things that we do as a community is provide safety for our citizens, and I think that it's really important that we give you what you need in order to do that in an effective and safe way for you and all your officers, and I just wanted to say that. But I also wanted to ask a question. What does it mean to the community by eliminating the wildlife management program, and what was that, what did that do for it?
Yeah, so, the Reader's Digest version is our wildlife management program. We hired two hourly employees that would come in and work 10-ish to 20, depending on season hours a week, and they would go out and cull deer, so they would have suppressed rifles, they would go out into areas where they could legally do so. A lot of times, it was on properties that we, our chief animal warden, Ryan Ball, had issued kill permits for, so if you owned a piece of land large enough for us to safely do that, you could have a kill permit issued there. We could then, if you allowed us, come onto your property and cull deer, you know, whether it be at, you know, Presbyterian Home or places like that. You know, the reality of this program is very bluntly this, there is no way to quantify the deer population here in the city, and I have never seen any numbers that statistically prove to me that we are doing. A lot of times, what I've heard is, well, that'll cut down on the car deer accidents. Well, we don't even know that, right, because a lot of car deer accidents are not reported to us, you know, so that's even hard to track. So, the only downside I see to it, quite honestly, from a tangible piece, is that the deer that were culled, we donated the meat from that to the hunters for the hungry. You're looking at, I think, the last calendar year that we actually staffed that as best we could, was about 200 deer in a year, and the challenge there, too, is those positions being hourly positions and being, it's a lot of work. I mean, you're out there trudging through the woods and the grass and dragging deer back, and, you know, dressing them and everything else, and, you know, we experienced the challenge of keeping those people in those positions, because most of those people had other full-time jobs, they were coming in at night to do this for us, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I was surprised you had a pair.
There were several that volunteered, but we do have a screening process to make sure that we're safely firing weapons in the city, so.
You mentioned your turnovers. Can you give a little more detail regarding turnovers, or will the report have information regarding your turnovers and what the cost of those turnovers, what's the dollar amount? Will that come to us?
Yeah, I can certainly. We'll make sure we include that in the workload assessment when we bring that to you. I know we've provided those numbers before, I don't have them readily available. We can send that information in terms of, you know, what it costs to outfit, equip, and train an officer for the first year, and then maybe what the recurring costs are, you know, each year after that, but, you know, it's substantial, it really is, and, you know, unfortunately, our officers are truly an investment in our community, just like every city employee is, and the last thing we want to do, you know, is invest that much money and have a walk away, and, you know, our line of work is kind of unique in that, you know, you don't just hire somebody, give them a week in the office, and then cut them loose. You know, we hire somebody, and then it's almost a year before they're even on their own working, so that's a significant investment.
Okay, and then I have a question, too, because you said, you know, we are thankful that our violent crime in our city is down, but could we attribute it to maybe some other services that are being offered throughout our community with other departments, other programs, and work that's going on that could offset maybe some of the criminal tendencies and/or things like that?
Absolutely, no question. We by no means are the only reason that crime is down. I would tell you, we're a big part of that, no doubt, but we partner with, I think, at last count, about 44 different organizations or programs on a regular basis here in the city. That's not counting the one-offs that we do on a weekend, and it's absolutely a community effort. It starts with you and the money that you invest in the police department, and the money you invest in other agencies that help serve some of the same people we do, but we've got to continue to wrap services around some of these folks, and, you know, there's certainly, we want to do everything we can to get those services to these people. You know, sometimes, we can help prevent that crime, and certainly, I think, to your point, a lot of what we see is, it's a team effort. Everybody that's sitting up there, the majority of the people you see sitting behind me, we all work towards that, whether it's directly in our case or indirectly in many other cases.
And do we have that broken down based on our teen, youth, juvenile crime versus adult crime?
We can, if you would like.
Okay, I'd like to see that as well.
Okay, yeah, so we'll get you, do you want to, I'll get it drafted, and then the city manager, and then if you want to see it a little bit differently, you can let us know, but we can definitely break it down by youth crime versus adult crime.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Chief Sudama.
I thank you all for your time, and thank you so much. The building project is moving along, and I can't tell you how excited we all are and everybody else is, and look forward to inviting you to a ribbon coveting in a few years. Thank you.
Thank you, and it is 6:15, I thank you, Chief. It's 6:15, and Councilmember Hagelson was suggesting that we would end here because of the time. Now, we have the fire department, which is next?
Emergency services.
Emergency services, I'm sorry, okay.
And that would complete this section.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I skipped over you, Melissa, I'm sorry.
We're gonna finish at 6:00, and so we're already...
Right, so we will...
So, we've got to come back tonight, so.
Right, so we're okay with stopping here at this point?
We work for you.
All right, we're okay at stopping at this point, that everybody's consensus. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for those that have presented, and thank you for those that were sitting and waiting in queue, so we'll see you next time. All right, we will have our roll call, and so I will start with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sure you or some others will mention the excellent event where we commissioned Engine 3 at Station 3 this afternoon, decommissioned the old Engine 3. It was a good gathering and a significant event in the life of our fire department and our city and that community. Really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know somebody else will talk about the breakfast this morning, I'll let you all do that. I just want to ask a specific question about, is it, who is our downtown relations firm? Is it Selamulner?
Selamulner.
Selamulner. Anecdotally, I've heard that business receipts in the area could be down as much as 30% for the year so far. I know, and the feedback I'm getting is Selamulner is doing an excellent job communicating between the business owners and the contracting, and the contractors, and executing that way. I was thinking that maybe we could ask them to shift their focus to be more external and helping, I don't know if it's in their scope or not, but helping them drive business to the area. So, that's, you know, what can we do as far as advertising, or what can the city do that makes sense to help promote business in the area, because I think that businesses are hurting.
I think that's actually more within the scope of the downtown Lynchburg Association.
Okay, all right, well, whoever's scope it is...
So, we'll pass that along.
Let's, I think it's important that we voice that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hagelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This week was the ASUN softball, or ASUN basketball championship. Liberty University won their conference for the year and then hosted the teams, and what a ball that was. They actually won their conference on Sunday. It was packed out, about almost 8,000 people at the stadium, and that's for the last game that will be, the last basketball game that will be played at the Vine Center. Next year, they'll have a new stadium, but went out with a bang, and it was very exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I expect you two will also mention the breakfast, which this morning was great. I also got to participate in the Mayor's Youth Council Lighten Up Lynchburg 5K, which was a lot of fun. I'm sure you also sort of commend the students for doing that, and then also the city staff who made that possible. And then, lastly, with Vice Mayor Dolan, I was fortunate enough to attend the opening of the Sheffield Elementary School gym this past week, and it really looks wonderful, and so a lot of credit to the administrators there, the staff, and the contractors who made that project possible, and the kids were really, really excited, so it was a great evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you. I did attend the Daniels Hill Historic District Meeting last month, and they still have some concerns about the new development on Capitol Street, and they would like to meet with the developers from the, at the bottom of the hill with the Capitol Street, with the Daniels Hill section, so if somebody could kind of coordinate that format, I'd appreciate it, with the developers, just so they can talk about traffic and parking and those kind of issues. And I know, I think they're working on a traffic study for the bottom of Rivermont Avenue and Victoria Avenue, I believe, where the D Street Bridge connects. I think they're currently working on that. If just somebody could kind of give them an update on their process with someone that considers about traffic, because it's so hard to get out of, from Daniels Hill, getting off either on, either part of Rivermont Avenue, it's just a little challenging. So, they just had some concern with there was a new development coming in, and a new development on Rivermont Avenue right there at the other portion by the bridge. They just had some concerns about traffic as well. And also, on Saturday, I was able to go to the memorial service for Catherine Johnson in Hampton, who was one of the ladies and hidden figures, the mathematician that did the calculations for the space shuttle, and Leland Melvin was one of the speakers there, so he continued to represent Lynchburg so well, so we're thankful for Leland's contributions to our community. He was at the breakfast today as well, so it's good to have him. And I think the girls from Heritage, they didn't win a state championship beside the track team. Let you talk more about that, or someone else. That's it.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yes, thank you. Well, Saturday, I had the privilege of being a judge at the News &amp; Advance Spelling D, and watched all these wonderful students perform. I was just glad that I didn't have to spell the words, and I could just look at them from a book. That was just really, really neat to see all the kids in Lynchburg perform in the manner in which they did, and I also did the breakfast this morning, which was fantastic, and lots of things happening. The fire truck was impressive, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.